Good evening, everyone. We want to welcome you to the Enlarged City School District of Middletown's Board of Education meeting for Thursday, May 21st, 2025. Hopefully, a quick and wonderful meeting, so those of you who are interested can go home and watch the Knicks tonight. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and a reminder that this agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they are made and again after the meeting on the public board minutes, which are available on the district's website. And because my Hispanic brethren have decided not to be at the meeting, I am forced to read it in Spanish as well. Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche está sugesta. A cambios en el momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se anotará en el momento en que se realice y nuevamente después de la reunión en las actas de la junta pública que están disponibles en el sitio web del distrito. We'd also like to remind everyone that translation and interpretation services are available during the meeting. If you need assistance, please let us know and we'll be happy to accommodate you. Nos gustaría recordar a todos que los servicios de traducción y interpretación están disponibles durante esta reunión. Si necesita asistencia, por favor, infórmanos y con gusto lo ayudamos. At this time, if you could please stand, remove your hats and face our flag for our pledge of allegiance, which tonight will be led by Mr. Freddie Williams. Please remain standing afterwards for a moment of silence for Mr. John Perino.
Thank you, President Estrada. The first moment of silence this evening is for all the military personnel who have lost their lives in various wars and battles of the United States. Memorial Day is coming this Monday. It is day to honor and mourn our dead military personnel. The second moment of silence this evening is for Mr. John Egan. Now, Mr. Egan, not a member of the district, but he did work with our students in various capacities. Example, our NJOTC students, Honor Society students, members of the Key Club. At the various events, he advised these students, helped these students become acclimated, and encouraged these students. So, John also served his community, longtime member of the fire department, or a fire department and chief of the Johnson Fire Department. So, he most definitely will be missed. Next moment of silence this evening, one of our students, very big Midi fan, Anthony Fenge. Unfortunately, lost his life in a car accident. He always attended the Midi Games, chaired for the Midis, attended various plays, concerts, and so on. While he was a bit physically challenged, he never gave up the fight. And the last moment of silence this evening is Mr. Alfred Booth. Mr. Booth, the husband of Lorraine Booth, a longtime library clerk in the district. Al served his country as a member of the United States Army during the Korean War. In addition to that, he had many volunteer opportunities in the community. All these individuals will be missed. Please remember these people in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. And now for the mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, Pastor Williams.
Mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, we strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, and to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive and productive members of society. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Roll call, Mrs. Monchery.
Mr. Estrada.
Here.
Mr. Moore, Mr. Perino, Mr. Rett, Ms. Romero, Ms. Tobiasin, Mr. Freddie Williams, Pastor Williams.
Yep.
Mr. Mitchell Williams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Monchery. I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes from May 8th, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Curtis Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need approval for Personnel Memorandum 22A, number one.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. Any discussion?
Yes, very disappointed.
I think that is the consensus around the table.
That's the consensus.
I will say that before we take the vote, Mr. Tuttle, if you could please stand. I'm going to make you sweat for this one.
It's going to be rough.
For those of you who don't know, this is, we're approving the retirement for Mr. Tuttle, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, who has served this district admirably. One of the best Moody ratings in the state of New York when it comes to school districts. We have a very sound budget process, as evidenced by our school budget votes, which we'll be approving a little bit later on. You're not a Midi Bear by trade. You're a Crusader, God forbid, but nevertheless, we want to thank you for all of your years of service, and we hope that you enjoy, 20 years total? 20 years total, and we hope that you find peace and that you enjoy retirement. Thank you.
I suggest that we...
Hold on, I got Mr. Perino, and then I'll pass it off to you.
Mr. Perino.
Ed, I suggest, I was going to vote no on this. I told Mike I was going to vote no, but he's younger and bigger than I am, so I'm going to have to vote reluctantly yes on this retirement. We all wish you the very best. None better.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Pastor Williams.
I also suggest that we make the next month as hard as we can for him. But no, I want to say this, and we'll probably have an opportunity before we get to the end of the school year, but Mike has been one of the best people to work with in every situation, and that's why this is so hard. It's not just about the job that he does, but it's about the person that he is. And so, that's what I'll miss most. You can teach people to do certain jobs, but the character and the integrity and the personality goes behind it cannot be taught. It's only natural. So, Mike, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Any other discussion? And I just want to add, you know, sometimes people don't really understand what the result of having a really solid Moody's ratings does to you, the taxpayers. But literally, that gentleman, because of that bond rating, has saved the school district and our taxpayers tens of millions of dollars in interest expense over the years. So, once again, congratulations. I actually need a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion regretfully carries seven zero. I need a motion to approve Personnel Memorandum 22Bs.
So moved.
22B, numbers one through six.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need approval for Personnel Memorandum 22C, numbers one through eight.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tobiasin.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need approval for Financial Memorandum 22D, numbers one through 14.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perino. Just wanted to note on the financial memorandum, you see a lot of agreements between Middletown and neighboring school districts. Those are for students who attend our private schools but are residents of another school district, so they have to pay tuition to the school district itself. We also have a couple of contracts between the school district and several colleges as part of credit offerings to our students here at Middletown. So, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need approval for Special Services Memorandum 21E, numbers one and two.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Freddie Williams. Any discussion? Mr. Perino.
Thank you. This has to do, of course, with approving the IEPs. I've been reading the IEPs, and I just have to compliment the members of that department. Nicole Tagne's here tonight, Julie Dominguez-Post, Ann Vanessa Pittman, among others. And I just pulled a few quotes from the IEPs with no names. And the students seem to be making great progress here. Positive interaction with peers in the classroom. Blank good student comes to class prepared to work. He is able to analyze primary source documents. Blank consistently demonstrates active participation in class discussion. Blank is showing progress solving multi-step problems. Blank enjoys reading time and tries to collaborate with others. Person enjoys writing the student that is interested in reading and reads consistently. So, again, congratulations on the special Ed, the services that you provide. John, I know, Ed, you're responsible for Truman Moon. I think that's your assignment. And the school is just as clean as a whistle if you go in that building. Tracy Sorrentino does an excellent job along, I say, with the special Ed. It's a nice environment for the students. So, that's my comment here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need approval for Change Order 16F, number one.
So moved.
Moved by Curtis Rett, seconded by Pastor Williams. Mr. Bartlett, if you'd like to give us some information on the change order?
Certainly. So, this change order is a credit for change order work that was not performed. The work was to relocate existing drain pipes, catch basin, and to remove an existing bench.
Do we expect that work to be done in the future? Or was it needed?
If needed.
Okay. We like credits here, so $71,000 credit I think we can vote for here. So, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Now, for some good news, I need approval to accept the May 202025 budget vote results.
So moved.
Ooh, that was a toss-up.
We all moved.
Can we go to the videotape? We'll give it to Mr. Curtis Rett, seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. Does anybody want to go around the table about the budget vote? So, I just want to let folks know, thank you to the city of Middletown and the Towne-Walkhill residents for your continued support and your faith in what we've accomplished so far here in the school district and in voting for continuation of the progress that we make. We're very proud of where we're at and where we're headed, and this budget will help support our students and our staff to continue that progress moving forward. On a side note, the budget passed with a vote of about 77%, so a very strong indication of where our public feels. You know, knock on wood, this school district has never had a budget vote voted down by its residents. So, when we talk about supporting public education, we mean it here in Middletown. So, thank you once again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need approval to accept the May 202025 Proposition Number Two results.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Moore. Mrs. Creedon, can you just let us know which one was Proposition Two? Mr. Tuttle?
Is that on? Can you hear me now? Proposition Two was the $20 million, 20-year capital reserve.
And as you know, we've had the capital reserves in the past, and we've used them for some of our projects to alleviate some of the tax burden on our capital projects. So, it's worked out pretty well. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need approval to accept the May 202025 Proposition Number Three results. Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Rett. Mr. Tuttle, can you give us a description of Proposition Three?
Proposition Three was the capital improvements district-wide for the $45 million. Some bathroom renovations, library renovations, some turf fields at Twin Towers.
And because of financing and fund balance usage, that is net zero to the taxpayer.
Net zero to the taxpayer, yeah, using capital reserve.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need approval to accept the May 202025 candidate vote results.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Rett. To let you guys know, we had our two incumbents who were running, Pastor Williams and Ms. Tobiasin, both get re-elected. Congratulations to the both of you. And as you know, our Vice President, Mr. Mitchell Williams, has chosen not to run. He's taken a position with the city of Middletown, so we wish him well. And in his stead, Dr. Patricia DeJesus was elected last night by our voters, so we welcome her aboard as well. And I talked to her last evening. She sends her regrets not being able to make the meeting tonight, but she'll be at a future meeting. And as we do, history here, those who have been elected to the board, they'll have a seat at the table even before their oath of office, so they can, you know, get the feel for the participation part of it. So, any further discussion on the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations, Middletown and Towne-Walkhill. And one of the group that we want to really thank are all of you sitting over there, especially to my right, all of our administrators in the district who have come out in support of what the taxpayers responded to, and that was the passing of our school budget. So, if all of you could please stand, so we can give you a round of applause for all the hard work that you did. Great job. So, now I'm going to hand off, this is always our favorite part, our board member recognitions and our community updates, and I'll hand it off first to Mr. Perino for Elk Student of the Month for May.
Thank you.
And Mr. Whit wanted to have me remind everybody that afterwards we'll take pictures over in front of the Middletown Legacy Maker banner.
I'd like members of the high school administration and our Students of the Month and any family members of the district to approach the podium. And since we have officials from the county and city and town here, why don't you come on up too, and you can hand the certificate?
And John, before you get started, I just do want to acknowledge our town supervisor, George Serrano. Thank you so much for stopping by. Unfortunately, he has another meeting to get to as well, but thank you for your support.
All right, I'll say it again. Good evening, President Estrada, members of the board, Ms. Creedon, district administration. It is my pleasure to present the sophomore class, Cohort 2023, Elk Student of the Month to Xavier Hines. So, a little about Xavier. He currently has a 95 GPA.
All right.
Currently has, there's more. 12.75 credits at this juncture, so even though he's a sophomore, he's theoretically a junior. And by the end of the year, he will have 19.25 credits, which will make him a senior. He is absolutely crushing it. He is also a member of our track team, where he is a thrower. So, he throws the hammer, the discus, the shot put, all that good stuff. And when I spoke to him about what he wants to do, he already wants to, he knows what he wants to do. A mechanical engineer, which is above, you know, anything I know about. And he's thinking about the University of Buffalo, so sophomore class, already knows what he wants. So, Xavier, did you want to share any words of wisdom?
I just want to say thank you for the nomination, and I'm glad to see that my hard work pays off. Thank you to my mom. She's my biggest inspiration here.
Harold Odom from the Elks is here this evening.
Good evening, all. Xavier, proud to present this on behalf of the Elks in Middletown. We have an award to give you as well. Unfortunately, somebody in order to frame this. But it doesn't stop here. This is the beginning for you to represent wherever you decide to go. Understand?
Yes, sir.
And it was very proud, made me smile, that you recognized who got you here. Not only the school, but your moms. All right?
You're going to be getting another certificate from the Elks.
Then we have Ms. Skylar Richards. Come on up.
Skylar is a member of our graduating class. She will be graduating in June. Four years here, she has immersed herself in many different areas. Obviously, her academic's a very successful scholar. She has been a member of our dance club, our video game club, and our literacy and magazine club. She's also immersed herself in lacrosse and wrestling, I believe. And when asked where she wants, where she's going to go to college, she's been accepted to Mount St. Mary for psychology. So, congratulations, Skylar. Would you like to share?
I just wanted to say thank you to the school district for helping me come so far in Middletown High School and all the staff members here, and from my family, who's not here at the moment, but...
They're always here.
Yeah. Who knows that I love them dearly and always been my biggest fan since day one.
Why don't we have the mayor and county executive come up and hand the certificate? If you'd like to say anything?
Well, I'd like to say, first off, congratulations on going to Mount St. Mary. That's where I went. You're going to love it. And anything we can do for you in a county, and Xavier, you as well, you want to be an engineer. We have an awesome engineering department in the county. We design bridges, buildings, roads, all sorts of cool stuff. But we also have a good relationship, and so does the mayor, with a lot of private engineering companies. So, as you're getting prepared to go to school, you might want to, you know, start interning and get a feel of things. So, I'll open my office to both of you, anything you need. So, congratulations to you both. Thank you. Congratulations to you. You're going to love it, man.
Yeah, I'll be very brief, but I just wanted to congratulate the district, but more so congratulate the students and their families. It's a fantastic honor to receive, but it comes after years and years of hard work, and we're very proud of the district. We're very proud of what you produce here, so much so that we've been taking business leaders on tour... leaders on tours of this school, and they are just amazed about the programs that are being offered here. And those programs are creating what's behind me. So congratulations to all of you, but more so, congratulations to the two of you.
Now we'll have the family and the students go over to the Legacy Maker.
Do you want to get in that?
Sure.
Go that way.
Mom, you can go over and get a picture, too.
Family members, please, we'll get everybody lined up.
I just want to say this real quick, is that it's been, it's been an absolute pleasure watching Xavier and his brother grow up. This is, this is a long, long-time family, longstanding family, got deep roots here in Middletown. And so it's been a pleasure watching them grow up and watching them from the days when they were, they were students over at Presidential Park. And now, and now, and now I look at them, this is, this is amazing. So congratulations.
Thank you very much again, guys. Awesome job. So next up, something that we're very proud of here in our school district, you know, and I give a lot of credit, especially to our Superintendent, Ms. Creedon, in making sure that this school district has partnerships with the City of Middletown and with the Town of Walkill, but especially the City of Middletown, I want to emphasize. Mayor DiStefano and his staff, along with our council members, Mr. Witt is one of the council members, Dr. Johnson's here, as well as the others, you know, they allowed us an opportunity to present our budget in front of, at one of their meetings as well. So we value those friendships and those partnerships. We look forward to them growing. And as a result of that, we have a very special recognition. We're joined this evening by our esteemed County Executive, Mr. Stephen Newhouse. In addition to being our County Executive, make sure you give him a thank you for serving our country as well, as he does continuously. And his aide, Mr. Mike Torelli, who used to be my assistant manager many, many years ago. So like I said, it's like watching one of your kids outperform you after so many years. So at this time, I'm going to hand it off to Superintendent Creedon.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for the Orange County Citizen of the Month Award this evening with County Executive Newhouse. Thank you. It's our honor to be here and share space with you this evening and be recognized for this. Mr. Newhouse, Mayor DiStefano, Town Supervisor Serrano, who had to leave, Mr. Torelli, and to our school community. Tonight, their visit represents more than just a simple recognition, but highlights the excellence, the dedication, and the collaborative spirit that define who we are as Middletown. Tonight, we are truly celebrating that we are one Middletown. We're gathering to celebrate the Citizen of the Month Award. We're reminded that success thrives in places where community, hard work, and a shared purpose come together. This school district exemplifies these values daily, and the partnership that we have with our friends, our community leaders, it strengthens our ability to nurture and inspire excellence in every form inside the school district and the community. I want to take this moment to thank our partners, our colleagues, our friends, the people we couldn't do this work without, the mayor of the City of Middletown and the Town Supervisor. This award tonight is not just for the school community, but our shared communities. When our schools are a success and they are rising up and thriving, our communities are as well. We cannot do this work alone. We're honored tonight, County Executive Newhouse, to have you here to help us amplify this achievement, shine a light on the remarkable contributions of our young people into our community and our staff. Please join me in standing and giving a warm welcome to County Executive Newhouse as we accept this award.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. It's really an honor to be here tonight, and I feel really uncomfortable because I want to call you Amy, I want to call you Ed, but I got to call you guys...
By all means, that's all.
Very official. I heard County Executive a lot of times. People just call me Steve. I had the great fortune today of starting my day out with many of your students. The Navy ROTC team, group, sailors, I'm happy, by the way, because you're the only ROTC in a county that has Navy. So as a naval officer, I thoroughly appreciate that. But your students put American flags on hundreds and hundreds of graves in our county cemetery, the busiest cemetery in the county, the largest. We have thousands of graves. Every one of them has an American flag for Memorial Day because of your students. So it was an honor, yeah, it was, that's... It was, it was an honor to not only work with them a little bit, they definitely outworked me, but to talk to them. Some of them that are graduating, asking where they want to go, what they want to do. We just talked to, heard two students that we recognized tonight that you did about their... It's just such a great time of year. Tomorrow, I get to give a speech at SUNY Orange's graduation and so on and so forth. But I'm here because of Citizen of the Month. And I started this a couple of years ago because there's so much negativity when you turn on the news or you turn on the TV and whatever it is, everybody's always bringing you down. And we don't highlight, in my opinion, all the positive things that are going on, what people are doing to make a difference. And the Middletown School District has weathered very tough storms over the years, particularly the last year. And if anybody knows anything about me, the two things that normally come to mind as being, is the U.S. Navy, because I always talk about it, you know, is emergency management. And my job has changed from 30 years ago, when it was cutting ribbons and kissing babies, this typical politician thing. It's now really front and center emergency management. Every county executive in New York State that gets elected is forced to take a class and get certified from FEMA, because you are now, in many instances, the incident commander because of so many things that are happening. So that, we are on call all the time. What we get a chance to do is we get a chance to work with some really awesome people. And I'm going to start with Amy. And Amy has not only helped the Middletown School District, but she's also helped fellow school districts dealing with tragedies and difficulties. And she's also helped us, if you remember the Farmingdale bus accident, help setting up receiving area. So she and her, the faculty at the school is second to none, and they truly should be recognized, and I want you to know that. The other thing is, they're, you know, I'm a Navy guy, so Admiral McRaven, who wrote the book Make Your Own Bed, so I know you're going to give out two books to students at the end of the year. It's either the places you will go, I think I'm saying it right, the Dr. Seuss one, or the Make Your Bed one. He says, he gave a lecture to us a couple of years ago before we deployed, and he said, "Everybody's going to have a bad day. It's, you're going to have a bad day, things are going to go wrong. It's not that you're going to have them, it's how you get through them." And it's, and it's so true. And I've seen this, this school district, again, not only with the superintendent and the faculty, but the students, get through and overcome some of the biggest hurdles and really be role models for the rest of the county. It's a big county. We have 400,000 people here. We have many school districts. Everyone is having challenges. And I got to tell you, this school district is, is really second to none, and you should be proud. So I'm going to read this, and then I'll, we'll take a picture. I'll obviously let my colleague, Joe, come up here. Mayor DiStefano and George had to leave, but we work very close together, and it's really a great, when you're working together like this, like your budget passed, you know how easy it is. You guys can do the people's work. So let me just read this. It says, "Orange County Executive Certificate of Recognition Presented to the enlarged-city School District of Middletown, June." Now, I'm leaving on Tuesday for the military. I didn't announce this yet. So that's why we're doing this now, because I'm not going to be here for your next meeting, and you got graduation. "In recognition of the strength, resilience, and unity demonstrated by the student-staff during the exemplary difficult year, and in the face of profound loss, you come together with compassion, courage, and determination to heal and restore hope. Your unwavering spirit and dedication to one another reflects the very best of this community," and it's signed by me. So congratulations.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I'd like to have, bring my friend Joe up. Do you want to say a few words, too?
You know, we're very proud of what we're accomplishing at City Hall and with everything that changes in our community. And, but one thing we, I've been in politics for quite a few years, and no matter what we do, we can put in new sidewalks, do facades, do our water and sewer treatment plant, but the number-one attraction to come into this community is the school district. Not only the programs that you offer, but the staff and the compassion that they showed towards the students. So when we sell our city, we're selling it, using you. And it's an important part, such an important part of it, of the equation. That's why you see no budget has ever failed, as Ed has stated, and that's why you see us out there advocating for the budget. It's unusual, I believe, in many communities where the local community invites the school district in to support, to portray the budget out there, present the budget, and then have the public support that we have had over the few years. So we've been proud to work with you over the years, even when we've disagreed, we've still pushed the budget, we still supported each other in the programs, we still go root for Middletown to beat Port, and, and we do a lot of things together that the people don't see, including, you know, Amy and I have lunch on a monthly basis. I don't think Mike, Mike joins us once in a while, but now he's going to skip out on it. But you're going to come back for lunch. But it's been that type of relationship over the years. So congratulations to you for the great honor, recognizing the work, and thank you, Steve, for all you have done for the City of Middletown, too. I can't ask for a better partner on county government level, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I, I will make one last note. This is Mental Health Awareness Month, and one of the, one of the things that Pete Striglione, who's a retired state police captain, he runs, he's the Commissioner of Emergency Management for Orange County. I hired, every, people that work for me say, "You're always being interviewed by Steve Newhouse," because I hire people, seeing them at car accidents or plane crashes or whatever, you're always being interviewed. He's a great guy. He was the zone commander for me here, and he talked about the communication skills that Amy has and this school district has with the public. The people want to know what's going on, even if it's bad news. And when we're talking about mental health, you have to have the courage to be able to say, "It's okay to not be okay." And it's okay to ask for help. And when we refer our mental health counselors, whether within the school district, for outside, for both students and for faculty, and for people that are affected during tragedies, it takes courage for people to step up and say, "It's all right to get help," or "It's okay for me to get help." And that is really one of the game changers with us being able to overcome some of the big challenges we had, and particularly the school district this year. So I want to make sure I mention that as well. So can I, oh, sorry.
Absolutely. No, I want to just touch base. So one of the things that we approved tonight in our financial memorandum, believe it or not, was an extension for another year of having the Orange County Mental Health Association satellite right here in our district. And we found that to be extremely valuable during the tough times in October and November and December, when we lost, obviously, some of our students as well.
Yep. So we do appreciate everything this school district has done, and we're going to continue to highlight you, especially next month, as we talk about your successes when facing tragedy. So thank you very much. So maybe we'll do a picture together?
Yep, that's what we're going to do. And I also just want to tell folks, so Steve mentioned something very important about adversity and how you answer to it, something that we at this table say almost at every meeting that it's okay to fail. It's just what you do with that. And I was actually at a BOSI's breakfast this morning, and we talked exactly about that, and one of the BOSI's people, so yeah, what we do with the word "fail" is, for us, it means first attempt in learning. And that's what the acronym for them, "fail," is for. But I also do want to acknowledge that, you know, we, over the years, with some good vision, were able and fortunate enough to put together some beautiful facilities here, athletic facilities here, that have been utilized now by the State of New York in a variety of different state tournaments. As a matter of fact, in the next two weeks, we'll be hosting the state semifinals in lacrosse, and we'll be hosting the largest sporting event in New York State, which is the Spring Track and Field Championships, when we'll have probably about 5,000 to 6,000 people here at least doing it. We've done studies, Mr. Coats, our athletic directors in the back, that shows that it's about a $3 million injection into our local economy here. But we could not have done that without the partnerships that we've had with the county and with the City of Middletown specifically, both who have stepped up to the plate in the past in the form of monetary contributions to the district to help us bring those tournaments here and bring that infusion of money into the local economy, both the City of Middletown, Town of Walkill, and the County of Orange. But you guys specifically in stepping up to the plate, and we appreciate that as well. So thank you once again. And I'm going to ask all board members, if we can all go over there, and we'll get together with the mayor. We also invite Mr. Witt as well, as a member of the council. He's saying no, because he's taking the picture, but nevertheless, we do want to acknowledge them. And Mr. Tobiasin wants to mention something about our own Freddie Williams.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that I think a couple of years back, our own Freddie Williams was recognized for the Orange County Citizens Award also. So the president's is there.
It's perfect. So next up, again, we want to thank everybody. We're going to hand it off to our own Pastor Williams for the NISBA Board Excellence Recognition Awards.
Good evening, everybody. I have the profound privilege of not just serving on this board, but also serving as the president of the Orange County School Boards Association, as well as the, and many of you know, as the Area Nine Director for the New York State School Boards Association. My direct responsibilities are for Orange, Ulster, Sullivan, Dutchess, and Green Counties. And tonight, the New York State School Board Association wants to recognize some of our wonderful board members that sit here in, at this table. The New York School Board Association's Board Excellence Recognition Program is designed to acknowledge those school board members who strive to continually expand their governance, knowledge, and skills. And so our records have indicated that a few of our members in our district have earned our Board Excellence Recognition Awards, ranging from levels one to four. And so tonight, it's my profound privilege to recognize those of you that are here, have taken time to participate in conventions. I believe in the last couple of years, we've, we've taken more people to the conventions than we've ever taken. Two years ago, two years ago, we took five. Last year, we took six. And they even have this name for us now. They called us the, two years ago, they called us the Middletown Five. And so we've earned a little bit of fame throughout the state as showing up. And then we have others that have participated. We made sure, over the last two years, that we would make sure that we all participated, even in the free offerings of professional development from NISBA. And so I want to, I want to recognize each of you. It's my proudest... Now, I had the privilege of getting all of this information a couple of weeks ago, so I held it. I did pretty good holding the secret. Congratulations, brother.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And lastly, lastly, this person, this person is receiving two awards. He is, he is, I'll put it like this, the patriarch of the board. And I had the profound privilege of serving as his vice president when he was the president of this board. And so Mr. Perino is a warrior. So this first Board Achievement Award is awarded to Mr. John Perino, Middletown City School District. And Mr. Perino also is receiving the Board Excellence Award, awarded to Mr. John Perino, Middletown City School District. Congratulations, John.
Appreciate it.
No, I appreciate you. Thank you. And so congratulations to all of you. I'm going to make sure, give this to Crystal so she can, she can give this to Ms. Romero. But congratulations to all of you. It is my profound privilege to work with each and every one of you every day. And so I'm grateful and thankful that you are being recognized. I think sometimes we let things go by, and people don't understand what it takes to really serve on boards of education. There's a lot of ups and a lot of downs. And contrary to popular opinion, we don't get a paycheck. But, but the paycheck, the paycheck that comes, and I say this, I say this, the paycheck that comes is when we get to see the smiles on the faces of our young people, when we get to see them walking across the stage, when we saw these young people get recognized tonight, to watch young men that I watched grow up, to see them recognized, that's the, that's the pay. And so I applaud each and every one of you for your sacrifice and your diligent work, and I'm looking forward to continue to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you guys want to go over there and grab a picture together as a group? If anybody would like to go around, we'll go around for board member community updates. Start off with Mr. Moore.
I'll be pretty brief. I just want to wish the flag football team this coming Friday, their section nine, I believe it's championships, if I'm not mistaken, that they take part, take part in, the flag?
So the, is the championship on Friday?
I believe it's Friday at Monroe.
Oh, at Lord's.
Lord's, yeah, Lord's, at Precipice.
Far away.
Yeah, it's kind of far. I just want to wish them good luck and congratulations to everyone that, that won this past election. And, you know, definitely just wish the entire school district and the community, you know, great success as we move forward. I think we're moving in the right direction, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Perino?
Thank you, President Estrada. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate Bishop Williams, Mr. Bison, and Dr. DeJesus. She's not here, she's not here tonight for another term on the board, and I'm sure everything will go very well. Also, I spoke about Memorial Day in my moments of silence, but one thing in addition to that, Monday, there's going to be a Memorial Day service at the Elks at 11:00 a.m., and everyone is invited. And after the service, there will be refreshments. It's a nice way to honor those who have passed in our military. The other thing, and I have quite a bit, but I'm just going to mention this, and then I'll, I'm done. We've recognized people tonight. I'd like to recognize, sometimes I recognize various families who have served the district. And this evening, I'm going to recognize three generations of a family who served the district and are serving the district. And that family is the Fuchs Redman Heneman family. Bonnie Fuchs, I worked with Bonnie, worked as the Office Manager at Twin Towers, later Secretary to the Superintendent, many years, I think 32 years she put in the district. Her daughter, Tracy Redman, is the current Office Manager at Monhagen Middle School. And Tracy's daughter, Katie, is working with Alyssa Shiner, Administrator Alyssa Shiner, in a clerical capacity at Middletown High School. And very hard work, and big assets to the district. So three generations have served the district, and if you talk to them, they like nothing better than working in the Middletown District. The other thing, I wanted to salute our technology department. These guys do a magnificent job. Let me tell you a couple of the things they do. They service over 10,000 devices, laptops, desktops, Chromebooks, phones, smartphones, and so on. They manage all the district cybersecurity efforts and networking infrastructure. They manage over 1,100 cameras and digital access controls. Over 60 computers serve, servers manage. Manage audio, video for district events, and they're, they're working this evening in the auditorium. Manage reporting services, data collection, report cards, on and on. Manage all instructional technologies and software. Right now, the members of that department are downstairs and broadcasting the, our meeting. So they do a good job. You can't go long without these men and women in this department. They're just, they're fantastic. If you have a problem with the computer, they're there to help you. They, as I say, they service so many devices. And I'm going to stop there because we want to keep the meeting short, but a salute to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino, Mr. Wret.
Hi, yes, good evening, everyone. I just want to share some pictures of some of the successes that are going on, again, throughout the high school, I'm the liaison there, as well as in the community, in the other schools as well. I think they should be popping up here any second. This was one of the celebrations, stem related celebrations at the school. It's a lot of good hands-on activities that the students were involved in with the teachers, and got myself involved a little bit in there as well. It was just a great opportunity to, for us to just kind of show off some of the things that are going on in our buildings. Again, we have our ROTC program, fantastic job that they do. And we have some of our team members, people that work throughout the school. You might recognize a few of them. And Ms. Gugliotta, the job she does, this was at the spring concert yesterday. I just want to reiterate the incredible job she does with this group here, with the violins. It was a really great concert, and she has touched so many lives with, she took the time to explain how kids from, that came in in the ninth grade, and how, you know, they've come so far, and she actually had them actually running the concerts, and she steps back. And it's just really special. We have some other pictures of that coming up. Well, we'll jump past that. I didn't get a chance to share some of the multicultural celebration pictures. And so these are some of those as well. Mr. St. Louis and his team did a wonderful job with this, as we talked about at our previous meeting. But again, so many cultures represented, big turnout from the community, and just a wonderful event once again. This is one of the students running the actual concert. I believe that's all. Thank you very much. Also, I want to congratulate our colleagues, our new colleagues on the board, Dr. DeJesus, in addition to Rose, Tobias, and welcome back, John. Welcome you guys back. Look forward to another wonderful year.
Thank you, Mr. Wret. Mr. Bison?
Well, first of all, as others have, I would like to thank the community for their support, both of the school budget and our propositions, and for allowing me to continue to serve on this Board of Education. Lastly, I'm going to talk about my favorite topic, Mr. Estrada.
Oh, let me guess.
Odyssey of the Mind. For the past three, three years, I've had the wonderful opportunity to accompany our teams to the states, then to the world. This year, the world is being held in Michigan, and our robotic team is going. So to me, that division came into the Odyssey of the Mind competition three years ago. I came back from Iowa and spoke to Dr. Connell. And before he even had a chance, before, to say anything to our superintendent, Dr. Connell picked up the ball, went running for it, and said, we'll be in that division, the robotic division. And sure enough, three years young, but our team is going on. To me, it is just one of the most wonderful privileges that our students have, meeting with these kids from all over the world, Europe as well as the United States. And it's, you have to see them collecting their pins on the floor, exchanging pins. It's marvelous.
Do you know the date? So it's next weekend, yep. Yep, after Memorial Day week.
They left last night, right?
Yes.
Oh, it's today?
Today, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's always over the Memorial Day weekend.
Okay.
But I have to say, I'm so proud of what all our teams did, the middle school, and I think, and the elementary. I think this year, we had a team in every building. It's a lot of work. It's a tremendous amount of work for the coaches, as well as for the students. So I say to our robotic teams, mighty pride and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Bison. And Dr. Connell and Ms. Tom, yeah, awesome. Pastor Williams?
Thank you. First, again, just as Mr. Bison did, I want to thank the community, for everybody here in this district, for first, passing our budget, helping, helping this district pass the budget. Congratulations to our administration on crafting, crafting such a good budget. Congratulations to our board on adopting it, and congratulations to the district as a whole, that now we can continue to move forward and do the work. I want to thank all of those that came out and voted. I wish that our, I wish that our turnout was a little bit more, but I am grateful for those that did come out and vote. Thank you for your confidence in myself. Congratulations to Mr. Bison. Big congratulations to Mr. Bison. Big congratulations to Dr. DeJesus on, Mr. Bison on retaining her seat, and Dr. DeJesus for now winning a new seat coming on the board. We look forward to continued collaboration and work with everybody that's on this board. And with that being said, I ask myself every time we come around to these times of years, anybody that knows me knows I hate the politics of, of these times of years. And I kind of, I kind of shrink, shrink away sometimes. And sometimes I, sometimes I can be a little frustration, frustrating to, to, to people because I, I, I literally despise politics in of itself, but I understand the necessity of it as a tool. But I ask myself the question, why do I keep doing this? And my answer, answer comes in so many different ways. I even alluded to it tonight when I was doing the presentations. But on last week, in the last couple of weeks, to have the opportunity to go to the, experience our programs, and to see so many of our wonderful scholars from all over the district do presentations, whether it be in the sciences, whether it be in the medical field, whether it be in the arts, it was an absolutely wonderful experience to be able to be there. And then on this past Friday, I was away, I was away on some business upstate. We got back, and I came straight to the high school and had the opportunity to, to step in and see the beginning of 101 Dalmatians that was performed, the musical or the play that was performed by Presidential Park Elementary School. And as I was walking out the door, so many of the, the young children from Presidential Park started waving, waving and saying, hi, pastor, and it melted my heart, melted my heart. I left from there, went home, changed real quick, and I went over to the prom. And I want to say this in my, in my few seconds left, this, this prom was so amazing. Our, our young people, our juniors and seniors looked absolutely amazing. But what impressed me the most about them, we did not have any incidents at this, at this prom, but what impressed me the most about them was watching these young men that were, that were being so chivalrous. They, they were helping the young ladies carry their plates, they were helping them hold their dress, they were doing so many wonderful things. And so I want to applaud them for just coming and showing what Middletown is all about. I even had a group of young men, about 20 young men, and I, that, that when I walked in the door, they looked, hey, pastor, come here. And they got in a circle at the table, and they bowed their heads, and they prayed, and that melted my heart. So congratulations to everybody on that, on this, on these particular events that's coming on. That's why I do it, and that's why I keep coming back.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Mr. Freddie Williams?
Thank you. Yesterday was a really great day for the district with the budget passing, and we have our new constituents, well, returning. Congratulations, Pastor Williams, Mrs. Tobiasen, and Dr. DeJesus. I also like to tip my hat to Mrs. Monchere, because I know that is a long taxing day on you.
Thank you.
So round of applause.
Not only a long taxing day, a long couple of months, because she's.
Yeah, right. And the culmination of that. So I called in a couple of times to check on you, and, and her energy is amazing. It sounded the same in the morning as when I called in afternoon. So we really, we really want to thank you for an excellent job. Ever since you've stepped in, you've stepped into greatness, so we appreciate you. I'm just excited for the, this final, final leg of the school year. I want to encourage, I'm sorry, encourage our staff and students to, you know, to keep the path, stay the path, you know, finish strong with these finals coming on and regents and so on and so forth. It's been an excellent year, you know, for the district. We did hit a couple hurdles in the.
they got in a circle at the table, and they bowed their heads, and they prayed, and that melted my heart. So, congratulations to everybody on that, on these particular events that's coming on. That's why I do it, and that's why I keep coming back.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Mr. Freddie Williams?
Thank you. Yesterday was a really great day for the district with the budget passing, and we have our new constituents, well, returning. Congratulations, Pastor Williams, Mrs. Tobiasin, and Dr. DeJesus. I also like to tip my hat to Mrs. Montchere, because I know that is a long taxing day on you.
Thank you.
So, a round of applause.
Not only a long taxing day, a long couple of months, because she's...
Yeah, right, and the culmination of that. So, I called in a couple of times to check on you, and her energy is amazing. It sounded the same in the morning as when I called in afternoon. So, we really, we really want to thank you for an excellent job, ever since you stepped in, you stepped into greatness. So, we appreciate you. I'm just excited for the, this final leg of the school year. I want to encourage, I'm sorry, encourage our staff and students to, you know, to keep the path, stay the path, you know, finish strong. With these finals coming on and regents and so on and so forth, it's been an excellent year, you know, for the district. We did hit a couple hurdles in the beginning of the year with the passing of some students, which was really heavy on a lot of hearts. But, you know, since then, we've been, you know, we've kind of stayed the course. And I'm really excited. I'm excited for our new team. This is a really strong team, right? You know, Mr. Mitchell Williams stepping away, it hurts, you know, such a passionate person in our work. But also, you know, we're moving forward with some familiar faces, and a new face that seems very strong. And I'm excited for our team and the progress that we will continue to make. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freddie Williams. I just want to add, once again, thank you. First of all, congratulations, Pastor Williams, well deserved. Mr. Tobiasin, well deserved. What term is this for you, Mr. Tobiasin? How many terms is this now for you? Too many to...
All I can tell you, as I said before, my son told me that what he's going to continually say is that she was still going. That's the school.
And then, thank you to the taxpayers. Please know that we take your vote and your support in us seriously. We will always look to strive to do better. As we talked about that word fail, we will fail often, but hopefully, we learn from that, and then we move on and do bigger and better things together as a community. I think we're proud of where we send our kids to school, which is a very important message, but we cannot do it without our parents. We need our parents. This is Mr. Tobiasin's seventh term, by the way. Thank you, Mrs. Montchere. Didn't want to throw you under the bus. But nevertheless, we do continually need the support of our parents to do their due diligence at home. Prepare your scholars for the day ahead each and every day, and we'll do our jobs here at the school district each and every day. Thank you to the staff, administration for putting the budget together, for our faculty for doing all the hard work, and our support staff, whether it's security or food service, or technology, community relations, everywhere. This is a job that everybody's part of it, and you should all feel proud of that. At this time, we'll move on to our public participation. The board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to 40 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes, and the public's not permitted to discuss topics and/or matters involving specific individuals. Speakers must sign in prior to speaking, and speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. So, at this time, do we have any takers? And unless the blue seats are going to talk, I don't think we'll have any takers tonight. Any letters for the board? No letters as well. Norma Avila, our student board rep, sends her regret. She could not make the meeting, and we all understand here at the Board of Education that there will be days that our student board member needs to go. And I know Pastor Williams has to leave, so thank you, Pastor Williams, as we begin to finish up. I don't think we have any board member conferences or professional development shareouts, right, tonight? Okay. Did you want to report anything, Mr. Perino, or? You sure? Okay. Thank you. We'll do our policy committee. Mr. Curtis Wret, I hand it off to you.
Okay, Policy 14A. May I have a motion to waive the first and second reading of the policies recommended by the Superintendent of Schools?
So moved.
Any discussion? Okay. Discussion concludes. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Any abstentions?
Nope.
Okay, so, motion passes.
And that's now a 6-0 vote.
Okay, Policy 14B, be resolved in accordance with a review of the ECSDM's policy, and upon the recommendation of the Board of Education's Policy Committee, the full board hereby adopts the following policy recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, password management and multi-factor authentication, otherwise known as MFA, policy, and the supplemental ECSDM IT policies and procedures. May I have a motion?
Do we, just point of clarification, do we need to vote on them separately, or can we do, vote on them together? Okay, because there were two separate ones, right? But we can vote on them together?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, may I have a motion? May I have a second?
Freddie.
Freddie, oh, Freddie, okay. Any discussion? Okay, discussion concludes. Let's go to the voting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, abstentions? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wret. Appreciate it. Any other Board of Education Committee reports?
May I just mention that the Audit Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, June 4th, at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Tobiasin. Any other committee reports? No. Moving on, anybody want to take roundtable? No, did you want to do roundtable for you, Mr. Perino? You sure? All right, so, in probably record time for Mr. Estrada, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Mr. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Nick Van and Mr. Curtis Wret. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Good luck, Knicks. Yeah, tell Mr. Mitchell Williams that.